18th, not at the town hall via video conference. Attendance, appointment of alternates, are we all here? Noreen, I see Noreen's name, can you hear me, Noreen? Barbara's connecting to audio, so we will have everybody shortly. Alright, so if I could get an approval of the agenda.
The agenda is presented.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Most and passes, on to the approval of minutes.
One of these things down there says show video, sorry for hearing me.
I will be approved of minutes from the February 19th, 2020.
Is there a second? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, we're on to public participation. No, we did have a phone number without a face, but. Any public participation? Alright, on to communications. Do we have anything? I had none, none for me too. On to monthly report, the town financials. We have any questions for Amy, or Amy, do you want to just give us a brief overview and?
I don't have any real updates, other than we did hear from the state that they were going to give us our PE Quot money, but that's a whopping $10,000. So don't spend it all in one place.
Yeah, I don't think that'll be a problem. Alright, any questions for Amy, anything anybody noticed?
No, they look good to me.
Yep. Alright, that was easy, on to new business and cathedate. Christine?
Sorry, what was the new business, you were breaking up.
I know, it's saying my internet connection is getting tough. Board of Education cafeteria update.
Well, you guys should have gotten the cafeteria report in the, in your copy of the Board of Ed agenda. And you did, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So expenses are down, which is fantastic, actually down quite a bit. Revenue was still not coming up, so we're continuing to problem solve that. We're gonna be, we were supposed to have been starting, but we'll have to see where that goes. So at this point, I'll be honest, in the last week since the meeting, I haven't spent a lot of time looking into the cafeteria. So I will leave based on what you have from the Board of Ed meeting.
Okay, sounds good. Alright, anybody have any questions, or are we all good?
I'm good.
Okay.
We're good?
Yep.
Sounds good, so number nine, B, Board of Education budget presentation, and what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna mute for this, Kathy.
Yeah, I think that may be what's causing some of the feedback, I think if everybody that's not actually speaking hits the mute button, we may find that it's a little cleaner.
Yeah. Yeah, that we're getting less feedback, so I, I'm going to mute while you're talking, and it, the floor is yours.
Okay, well certainly if anyone has any questions, once I get going, by all means pop yourself off mute and let me know. Let me see if I can get the screen shared again. So this one, share, okay. Can you see it?
Yes.
Yep.
Alright, I heard a yes, so that's enough. Um. We want to talk to you guys about the budget request, and what that is going to provide to the public schools of East Windsor today. I'm gonna end up moving through too fast, because I'm using my, let me try to use something, you guys are, the Zoom screen is kind of hovering over my scroll bar, so I'm gonna play with this and figure out a way to scroll without jumping too many screens at once. Move you guys to the other side, oh that's much better, okay. Excellent. So, we want you to know that what we're doing is following the community's plan to produce and deliver a quality educational program. The five goals that you see on the screen all come out of our strategic plan. And the community members, teachers, administrators, BOE members, all of these people were involved in creating the East Windsor Public Schools strategic plan, and that covers a five-year period. So the plan includes high-level goals, which you're seeing here, and some very specific benchmarks. They were considered important to create well-rounded students. These goals will, will provide students that are ready for college, career, and life. The plan also included specific goals and benchmarks for providing a safe and well-run school system that meets the needs of all students. So portrait of a graduate, this is something that NEASK started a couple of years ago, and a lot of districts are still working towards developing this. I think we're pretty far along in the process, we started fairly early. But the goal is to provide a vision of where we want our students to be when they leave our schools, and what qualities we want them to have as adults that are, as they're going out into our community. So we conducted a survey, and that was completed by community, which was parents, business owners, teachers. We asked them to identify the characteristics needed to help students achieve lifelong success. So the committee came back with these listed characteristics, as things that they thought our students should have in order to have the ability to enhance our community and workforce using these skills. So critical thinkers, problem solvers, making healthy decisions, being reflective of their own actions, being contributors to our communities, and being able to communicate clearly, probably way better than I'm doing right now. But those are all the things that came out as the most important pieces of what our community says our graduates should be able to do. So this is about our graduation rates. The graduation rate is, is positive when students are able to feel engaged in school. They want to be here, they stay, they stay in school and they work at it. This occurs when you have a wide variety of opportunities. Our safe, safe school climate, restorative practice work, in combination with school social workers, school counselors, and school psychologists, providing clinical and social emotional support, as well as family support for students that have additional needs, all help students feel that school is a safe and supportive place to be. Staff provides positive welcoming classrooms, and they work to build trusting relationships with students. To help engage students and allow them to see the potential in post-secondary education, we provide college visit trips, field trips, like each year, we provide those to two-year, four-year, and technical schools. So our students know what types of opportunities are available for them, should they choose to access postgraduate formal education. We also have resources at the high school to provide additional support for students who need assistance completing the application and financial aid process, which for those of us who have been through it, we know it's not fun. Our school guidance department also provides workshops for students and parents to help the process, in the process, including the financial aid application itself. So in district, we used to have a wide variety of elective courses and after-school club help to engage students, have them see our schools as a welcoming environment. Goal is to provide that level of support and engagement again. We would also like to bring back extra support in math and literacy that was provided through numerous tutors and several math teachers, all resources that were lost in previous budget years. Despite the losses, our staff has worked hard to keep students engaged in learning. Our high school graduation rate remains essentially at or above state average despite having lost most resources for summer school and relying primarily on online resources for credit recovery. So from this list, you can see that our students attend a variety of schools, post, post-high school, including technical, two-year, four-year, and specialized schools, such as those that specialize in art or health, science, and pharmacy. They're attending schools in Connecticut, they're in the Northeast, and they're across the country. East Windsor graduates have the skills they need to be accepted into succeeding colleges, like Wesleyan University. Wesleyan has about a 24% acceptance rate, it's one of the harder schools to get into, and yet our students have managed to do that. They've gotten into RPI, which is also a very difficult school. And, and I want to point out that this is a sampling of the schools that our recent graduates have gotten into. It is by no means exhaustive, the list was too big to fit on a slide, so. So the college application process is extremely competitive. Our students need to have the opportunities and access to rigorous courses, the ability to participate in extracurricular activities, to learn scholarly habits, to have excellent communication and interpersonal skills, and they still have to have a strong academic record. East Windsor Public Schools must be able to provide students the ability to develop these skills if we want them to be successful. Sorry, working off multiple screens here. So scholarships. We have, our students have done very well in the scholarship department, as you can see by this chart. This is, covers the previous two years, and this year, they were already up to 600K. I don't really know what will happen to that, but they were well on track to meet or exceed last year's scholarship levels. So awarded these scholarships, not just for academic performance, but they're a reflection of their character, their involvement in civic organizations, their fields of interest, their volunteerism, and their athletics. Enrollment numbers, so we hear all the time, and there's a misconception that our schools are losing high numbers of students. In reality, the enrollment over the last few years is reasonably level. It goes up, it goes down, but it's around, from an average, around the same. Some of our students leave us to enroll in highly specialized programs, such as technical or agricultural programs. That's not anything that we can provide at East Windsor, so we understand that. In addition, many, many parents cite the fact that they are moving out of town or out of state for, as a reason for leaving. Each year, I want to talk a little bit about the transient rate and what happens with our students. So each year, we have a number of students that both leave East Windsor or move into East Windsor. This change in student proves challenging, because students with various needs and talents move in at various times of the years, and we need, just need to work to address their specific needs, whether they be special ed, advanced learning, whatever it is that they require. Some students who enroll in the East Windsor Public Schools are already attending magnet schools, or agri-science schools, and technical schools. When they move in, they don't change those, they don't change where they want to attend, they stay at their magnet school or their agri-science school. For an, as an example, from September to February of this year, we had 21 students move to East Windsor. So essentially, enroll in East Windsor schools, but they're already attending magnets or technical or agri-science schools. So they never came through our East Windsor Public School doors, but we are responsible paying for their education. We also hear that we're, have a high and increasing number of students attending magnet schools. But based on our October 1 enrollment statistics, and looking back over four years, our percentage of students at magnet schools has actually decreased across the past several years. We had fewer students apply this last year than last year, and the year before, and the year before. That's information that we have confirmed through, Christine, help me here, that is not, that is the correct?
Yes, correct, confirmed, we have less students applying for next year than we had for this current school year.
Thanks. So another concern we hear about is that we have too many administrators. So there are many mandates that are met by the work of the administrative staff, including things like teacher evaluation, attendance, which we're going to discuss more, bullying and harassment investigations, discipline, and investigations into allegations of unsafe or threatening behavior. And that, those investigations happen whether or not it's found to be accurate. So if someone reports something, the administrators need to look into it and determine whether it is accurate or not, and then determine a course of action if it is. So our administrative team has decades of experience in teaching and administration, and we value the leadership they bring to the district. We're excited about our current administrative team and the strength, the strengths that they bring to us. So this slide kind of compares the number of teachers, paras, and administrators at East Windsor to a couple of nearby schools that are reasonably similar size. It's hard to find someone nearby that has the true size that we do. But, moving into the next slide, we can compare against those, and you can see that, and when we roll in the number of students that come into play at each of those schools, so Windsor has almost three times the enrollment, but they also have three times the teachers. One and a half times, give or take, paraprofessionals, that's going to be dependent upon the makeup of students. And they have a little more than 3% in the number of, times the number of administrators we do, more than three times the number of administrators we do. At Windsor Locks, their enrollment is about one and a half times what ours are. They have one and a half times more teachers, times more paras, and one and a third times more administrators. So we're very comparable in terms of the staff that we're using to deliver our instruction, to manage our schools. So we have some updated graduation requirements. And these reflect new language regarding pathways and realigning courses under the new Department of Education language. So we're working to provide increased opportunities with our courses, such as lab sciences and high-level math courses and languages. And those allow students to apply to a four-year college. This year, the BOE approved several new courses to increase those opportunities. We also continue to include community services graduation requirement, because we feel, our administrators and our staff also believe that students should have the experience of giving back to the community, and we encourage that civic involvement. So just to highlight the humanities, that's going to be all your music, English, social studies, if you're not familiar with the jargon that the school, the Connecticut Department of Education uses, STEM is pretty obvious, those are the sciences, the math, the problem solving, but it's also things like technical electives, such as automotive and such. I think the rest of these, phys ed, health, safety, world language, the rest of that is all fairly self-explanatory. So we're working to identify and provide new opportunities in different ways for our students to explore their interests and still meet the Connecticut Education Department requirements for graduation. So there are a variety of ways to get there, and, and these are all things that are kind of opening up on the education horizon. People have started to realize that there's more than one way to get from point A to point Z, and we're trying to keep up with that by providing, and exploring additional career and job shadowing opportunities, and increasing the variety of courses by creatively adjusting the high school schedule to allow more STEM and humanities electives, and also to meet the Connecticut State Department of Ed mandates for new courses and content that needs to be provided. But all this work of job shadowing, and, and interning, and different ways of providing proof that you know how to do something and are worthy of graduating and moving on to the next level. This, it's becoming more than just taking the test, so to speak. So we're looking to enhance and, and work with that process. So we're also moving in the area of standard-based report cards. So Broadbrook has already started this, they did that this year. Not sure how that'll play out through the end of the year, I guess, the way it has since the beginning of the year, but things are looking, the horizon's looking a little different these days. But this standard-based report card shows the challenges that they face in other areas of life, or, I'm sorry, that reflect how the students are meeting their standards. So the challenges that they face in other areas, like their discipline, and their homework, and their responsibility, and citizenship, those are all addressed on the report card, but they're addressed separately than, from the academic performance. And by doing that, we can separate the, whether they've attained the academic benchmarks from the behavioral and citizenship expectations, and that allows us to better identify and address specific areas of challenge. Teachers and administrators are better able to tease out what is an academic performance issue versus seeing a need for supports in other areas. We're deeply into the work of getting the middle school report card ready, to do a standard-based report card next year at the middle school, and we'll implement that at the high school the following year. So we went, we took a lesson from some people who started before us, and realized that starting with the younger grades was a little bit easier, and will learn from that and work into the other two schools. So the Broadbrook momentum, so we've seen some positive changes in the performance at Broadbrook, which was named a school of distinction for growth in math last year. And that was based on their performance on the 2017-18 Smarter Balanced Assessment scores. Of course, the scores and the results usually don't happen in the same year, but we've been using tools provided by the Department of Education to help us identify and target specific areas that affect literacy. So we're doing really well in math, but we need to do better in literacy. So the resulting plan, including professional development, assessment, and intervention, is all geared to increase literacy performance. Unfortunately, we have lost much of our intervention staff in the past budget cycles. And while we don't have enough resources to dress, to address all the needs of all the students, we continue to address the needs of our most struggling students. So many of the areas of focus at Broadbrook are clearly aligned with the goals of the strategic plan, all of which are intended to improve the academic achievement and school experience for our students. With the support of the Board of Finance and the community, we were able to provide the opportunity for students at Broadbrook to access one-on-one devices, laptops. This opportunity both increases their familiarity with the online tools needed for state testing, and it provides the vehicle for targeted assessment that allows the teachers to change instruction based on student needs. As a side note, our one-to-one program has also helped our students transition to our current remote learning situation. I see a lot of comments on Facebook that, for the most part, it's going very smoothly, what could have been a complete complete disaster in a very difficult situation seems to be working with some learning curves, of course, working very well for a lot of families, and they seem very pleased with that. So the data provided on the state assessment shows that our school of distinction designation, what our school of distinction designation already showed, and that's that the students at Broadbrook are making growth in math. So their growth rate has increased by 20 percentage points since 2016-17 data, and during the same time, the state growth only increased by 3.85. So clearly, what we are doing is working, and definitely increasing the growth in math learning at Broadbrook School. At the middle school, we have some work to do, so based on the accountability data from the state, we have performance issues in math. So what have we done about that? So, we provide, the data that's provided based on state assessment, sorry, wrong one. Performance at the middle school is part from what we believe our students can achieve, and we're working to provide improved instructional opportunities. So we're using the Sback interim assessments to better monitor student performance and change the instruction to match what it is that they're lacking. We have already scheduled additional professional development for next school year, and pending a grant, maybe some work this year as well. That'll also, I guess, depend on whether we can do that online. We are also aggressively working to identify a variety of core and supplemental instructional materials. So given all those factors, and hopefully the opportunity to maintain our math and literacy intervention staff, we are confident that we will see an improvement here. So as we've shared before, students encounter what we call ACEs, Adverse Childhood Experiences, that have an impact on their academic, behavioral, attendance, physical, and mental health. These impacts can last into adulthood for some people. Last year, we provided you a packet of information on ACEs. Since there are new members on the Board of Finance, and probably the Board of Selectment as well, we'll get some information out to all of you to better understand what ACEs are, and how they affect the children, and their ability to learn, and their, and their, the impact of all of that on the education system as a whole. But the prevalence of trauma among youth is very concerning, in that more than 25% of our youth experience a serious traumatic event as, before their 16th birthday, and many children suffer multiple and repeated. About 25% of the victims and witnesses develop PTSD, depression, or anxiety disorders. And all of that is obviously going to interfere with a child's ability to concentrate and learn. All of this is based in research that has been going on for quite some time, and, and if you're interested, we can share the, some of the sources are there, but there, there are others as well, and like I said, Chris will send you all some information about what, what ACEs are, and a little, in just a little bit more detail. Alright, so nursing, as you can see, those are a lot of nurses' visits. Meaning students' social, emotional, and health needs usually starts in the nurse's office. These statistics are for the current school year, and only go through mid-January. That's about half the year. So you can do the math and see how many nursing visits we likely would have had had we stayed in school through the middle of June, as we were scheduled to. Our nursing staff, who are just one service department in our schools, help our students by providing a high number of visits for medical administration, as well as other needs. Oftentimes, emotional issues present first as physical ailments, such as headaches or stomach aches. And our nursing staff is the first critical component of the many ways that we support our students. Maintaining our nursing, nurse staffing level is one of the opportunities that we want to keep for our students this year. They are our first line of defense for kids who are starting to struggle. They identify, they help figure out what's going on, is it a real medical problem, or is it something else? And then help make the referrals that we can use to help children. So we've done a lot of work in support of our safe school climate as well. They've made, our staff has made considerable efforts, and they work with this. And working to ensure students have a positive connection to school. We've conducted staff training, we have two staff trained to coach others in implementing restorative practice. We're piloting a mentoring program of high school students going down to the middle school. You have a variety of positive, I'm sorry, take that back, that's the kids that go to the Broadbrook School. The mentoring program is with adults at the middle school, working with specific students who have been identified as needing a little more help. And we also have a variety of positive experiences for our students, and those And those are just the ways that we're looking to engage students, create a positive experience for them, and keep them in school. The use of restorative practices, many positive outcomes, including with discipline, and we'll show you those numbers shortly. What we've done at, from, from the whole school level, we've done PD for all staff. We've revised the Behavior Referral Form, we're having climate meetings. The high school, safe school leaders facilitated advisory lessons three times. I think that's three times a month, Christine, or a week? I'm not sure, we'll get back on that. Looks like we didn't quite finish that slide.
Sorry, I couldn't unmute. No, it's three times a year that we have scheduled trips for the high school and middle school kids to go down. So it's three times a year right now.
So those are, those are the trips between schools, not the, the work that's done within, within the advisory at each school level?
Right, so high school students will go down to the middle school into Broadbrook and deliver specially created advisory lessons to the younger students regarding particular topics related to our Safe School Climate curriculum.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome. I couldn't unmute, sorry.
That's all right. I was reading this and what clicked in my head was the advisory classes that we have with each of the classroom groups on a more frequent level. So those happen as well.
Correct.
So we have staff members trained on circles and restorative conversations. We've implemented the mentorship program as we talked about, the advisory lessons in classrooms, check-ins, restorative conversations. I really wish that we could have had our Teacher of the Year here to talk to you guys because she came forward to talk about what the work that they do in the reset room, that she does as one of the people who man that room at times. And I think a lot of people have a misconception about restorative practice. They think it's, it's giving kids excuses and just saying, just say you're sorry and it's over. And it's really so much more than that. Kids come in when they need to reset their behavior and, you know, the conversations are more like, you know, what happened? How did you feel? What did, you know, what made you do that? It makes them reflect on what it is that triggered them, and then they work with them on how to reset those triggers, how to work with those triggers. And then the last piece is, there may still be a punishment, obviously depending upon the level of misbehavior. There's certainly going to be an apology back to whoever the interaction was with. So the, the punishment isn't gone. It's just more than just you did wrong and here's a punishment. It's a discussion about what went wrong, how it went wrong, how they could have changed it, how they could have fixed it, and then the punishment. So they learn from it instead of just getting a reaction to it. And I think that's a really important point to restorative practice that a lot of people miss. So, ism. Connecticut State Department of Education identifies any school that has more than 10% chronic absenteeism as being in need of added steps in their attendance work. So as you can see, the middle school, we're in pretty good shape. And at Broadbrook School, we're in good shape, but at the high school, we are not. Overall, the high school attendance continues to be a significant concern, and we are making changes in a variety of areas to improve that. We're looking to maintain a district-wide school social worker for next year to assist with the planned increase in home visits and ongoing attendance work in all buildings, but especially the high school. We've put a lot of work into this issue. Measured success, some success, we obviously need more. Having that social worker to continue the work on this will be important to improving these statistics. So this next slide talks about some of the things that we have to do when there's chronic absenteeism. Tier one, that happens for all students. Everybody and all the parents get the requirements for attendance, and we do it in alternative languages, and we have all sorts of academic and behavioral supports available. So that's district-wide and for all students. Tier two starts, and as we read through there, you can see the state encourages us to visit the home if a student reaches this level. And the goal is to evaluate students that are exhibiting early indication of attendance issues. So these are kids with chronic tardiness or three to six unexcused absences in a short amount of time. Then we're supposed to, according to state recommendations, schedule meetings with parents and the students within 10 days of a fourth unexcused absence in a month or 10th unexcused absence in a school year. So there's all sorts of rules around when you have to do what. But at tier two, you're meeting with the, with the student and with the parents. And at tier three, you're starting to refer students to supportive programs, things like the Youth Service Bureau, and you're informing parents that students are getting additional support to improve attendance. And you're trying to bring parents into a system that, as early as possible. But to be quite honest, it's not always effective. So grant funding for home visits. So we've received some grant money already for staff to be trained, and we have done that, done some of that training. So the home, home visits are not only part of our attendance plan, but they're also a best practice recommended by the state. So we had nine staff volunteer to be trained, and we hope to maintain all of that staff this year. Or we're going to have to start retraining or training other people and if we lose the people that we've already been able to train. Unfortunately, several of the staff that we have trained are on the possible reduction list, including our family outreach social worker. So we have grants that we use to support the restorative practice. So we mentioned several of the resources that we have in our work with restorative practice, but we wanted you to know that much of that work was conducted with a competitive grant that the district was awarded. We are not relying solely on local funds, but we are actively seeking other funding opportunities. So the money that we got from the Connecticut School-Based Initiative provided some training. It helped build connections between community, through supports, helps us revise school practices to increase our capacity for response, and provided a "train the trainer" for two of our people so that we're able to sustain this as we move forward, train more people with the people that we have trained as the trainer. And it also provide partial funding for staff salary to support this. So what has all of this gotten us? Our Behavior Intervention Specialist/Safe School Climate Coordinator, which is a grant-funded position, has been leading the district-wide with building-level leadership from our assistant principals and Safe School Climate Committees at each building. The effort of all the staff have shown positive measurable results in the discipline data to date in each school. It is going to be a long, and a lot of work to teach. Well, to teach things that, that I know my mom taught me at an early age. The please, the thank yous, this, the, just the, the normal interactions and showing respect for other people. All of that work is, is part of what restorative practice does in helping us understand how we affect other people. So as we do that, the discipline data falls naturally. So we have been seeking a lot of grants for our restorative practice work. This slide shows you some of what we have received or will receive. We were constantly seeking funding in addition to the local appropriation to provide opportunities for our students. Some of these grants have been available for several years and are generally used to provide critical staff positions. Others have been awarded due to staff generously nominating a school, such as Broadbrook with the AT&amp;T, not the AT&amp;T, the Burlington Factory Award. And others are grants that we had to apply for. We do have two grants that are still pending, and despite all things, we continue to hope they will be awarded, which will again increase instructional resources for our students. So the AT&amp;T grant, something that we're, have gotten before. Learned about that through one of our state legislators. The Alliance Grant, as you know, coming to us since the Alliance Schools were first identified. The Burlington Factory Grant was provided as an adopt-a-classroom, to get classroom supplies for all of the teachers, and that was submitted by one of our staff people. So some, some grants really can't be requested by the school, and that would be one of them. It has to be somebody who sees it and, and goes through the trouble of doing the application. The CHEF Open Choice, that's obviously something that we get every year, and that is our Behavior Intervention Specialist. And we got a $5,000 that related to our restorative practice at Safe School Climate. And $136,000 and change over the Open Choice District Support Services Grant. This one is pending response, this was recently applied for, and it would provide professional development and academic resources specifically for math and reading across the entire district. So that will be a big help to us if we are able to receive that grant. These are some more, the top one here, the, I don't even know how to say that, PEGPETIA, whatever that is, that grant that we applied for, for $200-plus thousand would replace all of the 91 Smart Bar, smart, smart boards, I'm talking too much, would replace all of those interactive boards. We are still waiting to hear on that, that is not a done deal. As we've talked about before with the Board of Finance, the smart boards, there's a number of them that are not working. There are a bunch more that the Fire Marshal has determined will come down at the end of this year. He's not happy about the way they're wired, so they're going to come out. And at this point, they're 10, 10 or so years old and are definitely outliving their usefulness. Many of them, you can't really get parts anymore for them. So the, the more efficient thing to do would be to replace them with the interactive boards, kind of like smart TVs, but not quite similar. So if we can get this grant, that will replace all of them district-wide, which is what we're hoping for. So Title I, again, an annual grant that funds our literacy coach, two reading tutors, a portion of the reading teacher at the high school, and the required transportation for students under the MECvento. Title II, that covers teachers to attend professional development and revised curriculum. Title III funds a portion of our ELE teacher. And Title IV gave us the parent-teacher home visit training and help with home visits, curriculum resources, and expanding participation in the AP courses at high school. And we are actively and always looking for more grants. So federal and state mandates. You've heard others say, and probably me too, that there's a lot of them. Unfortunately, a lot of the work that we're trying to do and prioritize gets derailed with a lot of the state mandates. These are some of the more recent ones. There are hundreds, literally. But some of these are new and ongoing requirements for programs, professional development, and curriculum, all of which we are required to deliver. Many of these mandates utilize professional development time that we would otherwise use to address academic needs. Staff would prefer to be addressing academic needs. But they're affected by, staffing is affected by changes to the required curriculum, and all the mandates have a financial impact, directly or indirectly. You're going to see in here, there's a new curriculum. Next year, we have to do Black and Latino studies, so we need a teacher to teach that. Increased services for students who have been expelled. They now have to go to a full-day program that is consistent in time to what a student would spend at East Windsor Public Schools every day. That has obviously got a much higher cost to it than the two hours or three hours of tutoring per day that was previously provided. The implementation of the Next Generation Science Standards. Revision of the Social Studies curriculum at the elementary school. And then that professional development list is just some of the newer things that have been required. There is a huge list of professional development that all of our staff has to do every year. And it takes away from their time to prepare curriculum and teach students. So these are some of the recent cuts that we've taken. So they reflect some of the reductions in staffing that have been sustained in recent years. So we've lost opportunities for smaller class sizes at the elementary. We've lost intervention across all buildings. We've lost elective courses at the middle school and the high school. And we really hope to provide these opportunities again in the coming years in order to meet the community priorities for our graduates. Going back to that portrait of a graduate, these are the things our community wants our students to be able to do. So some of the impacts have kind of been discussed already, but I'd like to take the opportunity to further discuss some of these that are listed here. These are potential lost opportunities for our students depending upon what happens with our budget this year. And these are some of the ones that we're most concerned about. So the social worker and literacy coach are both integral parts of grant applications, and the impact on the grant approval would be unknown. We may not get the grant if we don't have that staff. Attendance, social, emotional needs, and literacy performance are areas targeted in the Alliance Grant, CHEF, and the Title IV grant applications. We're concerned about our ability to meet those requirements and how that might affect getting those grants as well. Response to intervention is another area that we're concerned about. Using scientific research-based instruction and intervention are identified in federal special education law as one way to identify students for special education. Our ability to maintain the literacy coach and the remaining math intervention would allow us to maintain some elements of our tiered services. Our ability to maintain our social work position would allow us to target high school attendance and continue to provide training for staff in restorative practice. The athletic programs, including the high school JV sports and the middle school sports, that were identified as those preferred by the students themselves. So we wouldn't, it's not all sports, but those that the students say that they're most interested in, they've been included in our current budget proposal. And we believe that providing those opportunities again in the district budget would improve student engagement, and we believe attendance. Improving engagement and attendance is more than likely to improve academic success. The building blocks are what get us to the end. So these next two slides show the results from the survey that we conducted earlier this year in order to try to learn what it is our community wants. We honestly feel at a loss because they keep voting down the budget, yet then complain when we don't have services. So we asked, what is it that you want? Is it important for our schools to provide tutors, interventionists and reading specials, reading specialists? Clearly, they feel it is. They also feel that arts programs, visual and performing are important during the school day. As are after-school activities, sports and clubs. This clearly shows that the community prioritizes the opportunities that we're including in this budget to try to improve our students' experience in East Windsor. We can only provide these opportunities with the community's support. Yep, sorry. This kind of turns things around and says, how satisfied are you with those same things? The number of tutors and interventionists and specialists? The programs that we provide in the, for the arts and the after-school activities? You can see that the very satisfied numbers are almost nonexistent. And they're somewhere between somewhat dissatisfied and satisfied. With a fair amount of people, a good percentage of people not being satisfied with what we're offering today. So since 2013, there has continued to be a discrepancy, at least 2013. There has continued to be a discrepancy in between what the BOE has requested for a budget and what has been passed with the referendum. With each year, we've had to make modifications to supplies, instructional materials, services and staff. We are finding ourselves in a position to have to make critical decisions about the opportunities that we can provide for our students. Our proposed FY21 budget, based on the information that we know at this time, includes increases in every area of our budget except for sped contracted services. As you know, the insurance increases each year have been in the double digits and it is starting no differently this year. While we are pending some decisions regarding a new insurance plan, we have budgeted for the current increase. We have budgeted for what we know at this time. We have also had to assume a slight decrease in revenue for next year based on our current enrollment of students through the choice program. We're not able to offer seats in the frequently requested elementary grades due to our own class sizes. Our, our resident students are filling those classes pretty completely. And some of the seats that we anticipated at the upper grades weren't filled. Not a big surprise since kids don't like to change schools in the upper grades. So while it's not a huge decrease in anticipated revenue, $48,000 would cover the cost of a salary. So what could the future hold? For the Board of Education, me and my counterparts, our superintendent and all of the staff in the East Windsor community want to provide a richer educational experience for our students than what our recent budgets have allowed. In the next few years, we would like to have increased elective courses at the middle and high schools. We'd like to have more variety of electives to allow students to further explore their career opportunities. We'd like academic support service that allows us to address the needs of all the students, including those who qualify for talented and gifted programs. We'd like rich extracurricular opportunities for students with a wide variety of interests. We'd like an athletic program for students at the middle and the high school that represent a variety of sports. We need a school climate that results in all students being engaged in the school community through use of restorative practice, sufficient mental health staff and guidance staff to address those with needs. We envision regular attendance for all of our students so they can access the educational opportunities we'll be able to provide. And we need clean and well-maintained buildings with regular updates, even simple ones such as painting, done to maintain an inviting physical environment. Nobody wants to come to a dump every day. Continued safe environment with continued focus on security and updated instructional materials for our classrooms and online environments. So the one thing we didn't do again this year, I realized that we're so busy with kids being out and getting that all ready. We did not put the budget number in here. But budget number is $25,546,447. That is the budget request that the BOE has asked for. That is a 6.8% increase over the current local budget allotment for this year. If you factor in the supplemental appropriations, which are obviously spent and very much needed, this would be a 6.19 increase over the local budget plus the CNR dollars. Does anyone have any questions?
Sorry, I was trying to unmute Kath.
That's okay.
Thank you very much for that. And do you guys have any questions right now or anything you'd like to ask?
I had a question. Would you be willing to let us post this on the town website?
I don't see why not. Chris, is there any reason we can't do that?
I was going to post it on the Board of Ed website tomorrow, so that, that's fine.
Perfect.
Well, also, obviously, you know, we've been giving you the electronically, the monthly line item budget from Andy in terms of the current budget. And we will provide that electronically to you as well with all the different line items. But we didn't think that would be something we'd want to go through tonight.
Okay, yeah, definitely. That would be awesome.
We also have, the staff has started a, we're looking at it a little differently. We're, we're looking at the things that we're trying to keep this year. And so we have prepared a list. And we can talk about that at the workshop when we come visit you and, or come talk to you again. We probably won't actually be physically visiting for a while, I guess. But we'll share that with you then as well.
Okay, great. Anybody else with questions?
Yeah, Kathy, this is Tom. One of the first slides showed a fairly large increase in graduation rates the last year. And I'm not sure if you talked about that and I missed it. But if you did, if you could just summarize why you thought the graduation rate went up last year. Was there something we did to improve that?
You know, statistically, Tom, I don't know that I really saw that as a big increase. I think our, it did go up some with the size of our population, that's maybe a student or two.
Okay, all right.
It's not really a huge number of people.
Yeah, on the graph, it made it look huge, but.
Yeah, but it just, I guess the graph was more to show that we are at least consistently meeting the Connecticut graduation rate. We're not far behind, or in some cases, we're ahead most years. I mean, I think if you average it out, we're pretty much even with the Connecticut State graduation rate.
Okay, thanks.
Anybody else? All right. Awesome. Thank you very much, Kathy and Christine.
Thanks.
Jason, are you there?
Yes, I am.
All right, you're up, sir.
All right, hold on one second. Let me figure out how to do this.
All right, oops, I need to find mute.
Okay, good evening. On behalf of the Board of Selectmen, I am pleased to present to you our budget recommendation for fiscal year 2021. The budget request is for $16,997,982, which represents a spending increase of 4.5%. I want to start by saying that we recognize that the percentage is a big ask. But it's being driven by, substantially by increased costs to healthcare, mandatory pension valuation changes, electric costs and contractual obligations. There is very little new in this proposal. What we are giving to you was passed by the Board of Selectmen by a vote of three to two. With those voting in the affirmative feeling it irresponsible to put forth a budget asking voters for any more than what we have. In light of the tremendous job loss incurred in just the last few days, I think that that judgment is even more prudent. Those voting no to the proposal did so largely because they wanted to increase spending between a quarter of a million and a half million dollars for funding for the Warehouse Point Fire Department. Again, though, adding that amount of funding particularly is, as we're seeing near unprecedented job loss numbers racking up on a daily basis, just didn't, is not fiscally responsible. In terms of that particular policy issue, I think all five selectmen are on the same page in terms of wanting to find a resolution to it. But as I've said a number of times since the outset of this process, trying to do that through the budget presents us with a math problem. So here we have a general breakdown of where the town side budget funding is going. And I'll start from the top right and work my way clockwise and round. 9% of our overall funding goes towards administration. Administration includes budgets for the Selectmen's Office, the Town Clerk, Treasurer, the Assessor, the Tax Collector, the Planner, the Building Department and the Registrars of Voters. Next is the orange pie slice. That's public safety. It makes up 24%, of the overall town budget recommendation. Public safety includes police, emergency management, fire service and communications. The gray wedge is infrastructure. This is three of the five budgets that are managed by Len Norton, including the Department of Public Works budget, the town property budget and road improvements. It makes up 15% of the budget. The other budgets managed by Len are IT and sanitation and they are included in the general government cluster, which I'll talk about in a second. The very slender yellow wedge are the three budgets that are managed by Melissa Maltese, as well as funding for the two libraries. And as you can see, that cluster makes up a total of 6% of our request. On the general government side, that's 34% of our total recommendation and includes a bunch of stuff. That is activities and fees, boards and commissions, contingency, information technology, insurance and benefits, pension costs, legal costs and sanitation. I've laid out the next few slides, each in the same way. Chart on the left shows a five-year trend culminating in the current fiscal year, not next year. The chart on the right shows what our current fiscal year budget is, what department heads requested, what I recommended to the Board of Selectmen and what the Board of Selectmen ultimately approved. So starting with this one, this is administration. Department requests included a spending increase of 11.5% or an additional $172,751. I recommended funding these departments at $1,553,890, which is an increase of $63,469 and decreases department head recommendations by 63% in terms of their overall increase. The Selectmen agreed with my recommended funding levels. The Selectmen's Budget, Town Clerk, Assessor, Town Planner, Building Department and Registrars were all unanimously approved. The Treasurer's Budget was approved on a three to two vote over concerns for overtime incurred, particularly with the clerical staff in the Treasurer's Office. I would say though, that overtime, the overtime request really is necessary due to the staffing levels in that office. Allowing staff to accumulate excessive comp time leads to additional problems throughout the course of the year. They have work that they need to get done. And giving them comp time to do it and then having them take time off later simply means that they need to accumulate more comp time after the, the comp time that they've taken and the snowball continues to roll downhill. I would also highlight a change in the Selectmen's Budget and the Planning Department. Membership with the Connecticut Economic Resource Council, which is now Advanced CT, has been moved from the Planner's Office to the Selectmen's Office because, because of the emphasis that I'm putting on economic development. I wanted to have direct control over that. The budget move is net neutral, but I thought that I would be more likely to see something happen with that funding have it in my budget line than what we've seen happen in recent years, leaving it where it is. Two other things of note in my office's budget. The Fire Marshal has requested materials for training and continuing education, which have been funded in this proposal. And we've also included funding for the Connecticut Main Street Center, which is an outside assistance group that helps with economic development and downtown revitalization projects. Some of you may remember they came, Patrick McMahon, rather, came and spoke at a Board of Selectmen meeting back in January, I think, to talk about taxing from financing, how that works and how that can benefit communities and also what the Main Street Center has been able to do in communities around Connecticut. I, I don't have the note in front of me, but I believe the total membership for the year for that is $1,100 and it is money that is very, very well spent. So I'm hoping that maintains. Next is public safety. These again are the Police Department, Emergency Management, Fire Service and Communications. The departments requested a total of $4,149,714 and I recommended $4,042,197. The Board of Selectmen approved $4,078,796. The difference between my recommendation and the approved amount was $36,599, which made up, which was made up of the restoration of funding for a data analyst IT position within the Police Department and the removal of an additional $35,000 for fire maintainer shifts in the Broadbrook Fire Department. The inclusion of the data analyst position passed on a vote of three to one, whereas the reduction in the fire maintainer funding passed three to two. Another important note with this budget cluster. At the time this budget was approved, the police union contract was still pending and had been expired for two years. We do have a tentative agreement with them and are hoping for ratification by the union and by the Board of Selectmen by our April 2nd meeting. Although the current circumstances around coronavirus may slow that down a little bit. Once we have that done, Amy will be able to provide to you more up-to-date numbers for what that contract may mean for the budget as soon as we're able to share that publicly. Infrastructure and Public Works includes the three budgets that I talked about before. It's the Department of Public Works, its town property and road maintenance. The original request was for $2.7 million, which was an increase of just about $300,000 over current year or a 12.3% increase over current spending. I recommended funding the cluster at an amount of $2,524,415, which supports Len's budget request with the exception of an additional reduction of $200,000 in road improvement funding. So to put that another way, I did impose a cut on the budgets that he was presenting. He had requested facilities maintainer to position to help take care of town buildings. I had, I did support that. The Board of Selectmen ultimately thought it best not to move that forward. But the reduction that I, that I show there is $200,000 coming out of the, the road maintenance money. This department passed unanimous, or passed four to nothing, so passed unanimously. Community services. This includes the Social Services Budget, the Senior Center, Parks and Recreation and the two libraries. Department heads requested an additional $82,335, of which 31,747 was for the Warehouse Point Library and 15,000 was for the Broadbrook Library. The remaining $35,000 was spread between Melissa's three departments, largely for contractual costs. Melissa had requested funding for a part-time position in Social Services, which has been removed. Social Services and the Senior Center were approved unanimously. The Parks and Recreation Budget was approved on a vote of three to one, with the major discussion point being whether to fund a part-time position to monitor alcohol consumption at the town park. The majority felt it not. The majority felt it not appropriate to require minors employed by the town to have to police alcohol consumption. Cost for that position is budgeted at less than thirty two hundred dollars. Because it's part time and seasonal. But what that does do is it removes minor, minor children who are employed by the town from having to to effectively police adults who are consuming alcohol legally. General government is a robust budget cluster that includes a bunch of things. It's activities and fees, boards and commissions, contingency funding, IT, pension costs, insurance and benefits, legal costs and sanitation. This budget is set to go up four hundred and forty two thousand eight hundred and sixty seven dollars or seven point five percent. The main driver here is the estimated cost increase for employee health insurance, which is currently budgeted to go up one hundred and sixty seven thousand six hundred dollars. Initially, our quote for cost increases for health insurance was a twenty five percent increase. After some haggling, that came down to a sixteen percent increase, which in my estimation is still way too high. We are currently shopping the town insurance plan for price comparisons, including looking at the Connecticut Prevention Partnership, which is commonly referred to as healthcare two point O. By converting to healthcare two point O, the town could realize a savings of fourteen percent from this year to next in our healthcare costs. The delta between what our increase may be if we stick with Cigna and what our decrease would be if we were to make that conversion over to healthcare two point O is nearly thirty five percent. In terms of pension, we've had some unforeseen changes in the adoption of mortality tables and return assumptions for our pension obligation that are increasing the general government line by seventy two thousand dollars this year. And it's important to note that this will happen again next year. The return assumption is being reduced from six point five percent to six point two five percent, but it's being done in in increments. So in this new budget, we're going to six point three seven five and next year we'll go to six point two five. And what that will do is kind of ease the pain of having to shoulder an additional hundred and fifty thousand dollars of costs there and we'll spread that over two years. Legal costs are anticipated to increase by twenty thousand dollars, largely due to the number of negotiations that need to be done. Assuming that the police contract settles and I have every expectation that it will. We still have two labor negotiations to conduct, which are the dispatchers and the public works union. And we have a multitude of pension negotiations that are still out there that need to be addressed. And they have been sitting for, I think, three years in some cases. Plus there are, there's just general legal costs that you need to provide for to make sure the town is protected. Sanitation costs are increasing by sixty two thousand dollars, which is driven by a contract. And and by the way, that might seem to be an egregious number and I would agree that that it is. But if you look at what sanitation costs are, how they're running across the state, I mean tipping fees are just outrageous. They're they're well into the triple digits at this point, which is just not the the long term solution for sure. IT costs are also up slightly, but this is a result of licensing requirements for new software that town has purchased. In terms of capital, our capital costs are being held to an increase of one point nine four percent and our debt service costs are being held flat at a two percent increase. If you look at the chart on the left, you'll see pretty substantial spikes in fiscal seventeen, eighteen and nineteen compared to fiscal sixteen and the current. That's the result of the added appropriations and the spend down that have been done at the end of the year for the last couple of years. We're not budgeting for that because that really is the rainy day fund and you never know when it's going to be raining. For example, as we're in it, what may be a very long term emergency circumstance, that money is going to be very important to make sure that we can cover immediate costs that we need to to provide for in order to meet public need. Overall, the department heads have asked for seventeen point nine million, which is an increase of ten point three percent over current spending. My recommendation to the Board of Selectmen was an increase of four point five eight percent and the board's recommendation to you is a total overall budget of sixteen million nine ninety seven nine eighty two, which is an increase of four point five zero percent. At the end of the day, their budget was thirteen thousand six hundred and twelve dollars less than mine. Some new initiatives that we're trying to do, and this is a very short list. And that's recognizing the budget situation that that we're in. We are trying to expand community engagement and increase government transparency. And so our budget does restore funding for community outreach. This will be used for the quarterly community newsletter and for other similar activities. It had been set at ten thousand dollars at a point over time and it had been reduced in the past because the approved funding was used for purposes other than those which were initially intended. And so your board, I think rightly, kind of reined that in. What our proposal does is restore that funding to the ten thousand dollar mark, which gives the office of the first selectman some opportunity to try and engage in the community in a communicative and transparent way. I talked about engagement with CIRK, which is now Advanced CT and with the Connecticut Main Street Center. Both of those are low dollar initiatives and they're intended to encourage economic development in our community, to build our tax base and to attract new businesses, as well as to retain the ones that we have. That is certainly money well spent. And then we also are including the data analyst IT position at the police department. This would help return existing police officers to the road, including our evidence officer, our training officer and other heavy desk duty responsibilities. The police department has expressed a strong interest in bringing on a dedicated civilian staff person, not a sworn officer or civilian staff person, who can help use data analytics, which would be used for preventative crime prevention activities. And also would have a role in addressing certain cybersecurity concerns that certainly are emerging in in municipal governments in today's world. The position would also become the supervisor for the dispatchers. And the position would be used for certain IT support services in the department, again, lessening a burden currently placed on a sworn officer. Overall reductions made by the first selectman or by the Board of Selectmen total more than one point six million or nearly ten percent of the total town side of the budget. This is a, I believe it's a comprehensive list of the cuts that were made. I will tell you that I that certainly I and I think all all five of the selectmen could make an argument that all of these are things that we should do. But there, there are things that we recognize, we just, we have a very limited means with which we need to live with it. So we wanted to be transparent and let you folks know those things that department heads and outside agencies had asked for and to to put information on the page to show what it is we considered, but ultimately couldn't fund. Again, all of these are good ideas. All of these are things that we should do, but at the end of the day, it's a math problem. So with that, any questions?
Thanks, Jason. Does anybody have any questions?
We're off.
I gotta just look over the numbers and see where my thoughts were, but I have no questions at this time.
That sounded like Bill, but I lost him on my screen. I got him. There is. Well, this is kind of like watching the Brady Bunch.
Yeah, right?
I saw that show on Nick at Night.
Any other questions right now?
Yeah, Jason, hey, I got one question. The police IT guy, how is that going to work with the union? If he's going to be supervisor of dispatch, will that work?
That's something you'll have to talk to the chief and the deputy chief about. My understanding is that that person would be in the clerical bargaining unit. But I I would check with them. They've got this figured out at a pretty, pretty high level. I would ask that question to them.
Anybody else? All right. Awesome. Thank you, Jason.
All right.
All right. Next on our agenda would be our audit RFP. Miss Amy?
Sorry, I couldn't unmute you. We got, we got four proposals. They range from thirty nine thousand nine hundred dollars to forty nine thousand five hundred dollars. Firms are firms most people will know. King and King, probably not a lot of people would know because they do a lot of smaller communities and nonprofits. But Mahoney Sable is our current one. They're the second lowest bid. Bloom Shapiro, which we've had in the past, is next. And then O'Connor, PKF O'Connor Davies, which is Joe Santafanti, if anybody knows him. He, he has been with several other firms, but have has landed at O'Connor Davies.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but the King and King, are we sure that they will work for us, that they will fit what we need?
I'm not really sure. They are actually the auditors at my fire district and I am still waiting for June of nineteen financials.
Well, that's not good. Well, I think for some things, less expensive is not always the answer. It's more, it's more as to who is qualified and who can do the job that we need.
I believe, I mean, are you happy with Amy with what Mahoney and Sable's been doing for us than?
I am.
Okay. Well, that would be my recommendation to stay with him.
Say, after looking over most of them, I'd have to agree with Bill.
I also agree with Bill. If she's happy with that and they're working out, why not?
And I really don't like the fact that you're still waiting for financials, you know. Can't be waiting when we need them. So and we've never, I mean, I think we had one hiccup with Mahoney, of Mahoney, but there was a reason and I don't, I don't think it was, you know, end all be all, whatever happened. Anybody else having a comment or opinion or?
Yes, I will move that we use Mahoney and Sable. And that was a three year contract, I believe.
Yes.
Audit for the next three years.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? All right, the motion. Rebecca, were you able to get who said I? Barbara there?
I'm here.
Oh, okay. Now I hear you. All right. So it was unanimous.
So Carolyn, just as a, as we try and figure out how these online meetings are going to work.
Yep.
It might be in in both your board's interest and tomorrow night in my board's interest for us to do full call votes instead of voice votes just for recording purposes.
Yeah, good idea. All right. You're cutting in and out for me. So Bill, can you hear better than I?
I can hear good.
All right. Mine's cutting in and out for some reason. All right. So who was in favor? How are we going to do this, Jay? Cause you're cutting in and out.
List individual names for board members, ask them how they're voting and then move on to the next one. So it would be, I'm looking at my screen, it would be Bill, Margaret.
All right. So Bill?
Good. Hi.
Barbara?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Karen?
Hi.
And Tom, whoever didn't say hi last time, Lantner?
Bye.
Okay, it's unanimous.
Thank you.
All right. Next is unfinished business. I don't think we have any.
I do not have any.
And then we will move on to board member comments. Does anybody have any comments?
For next week, we're doing this the same way, I take it?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I guess we should have a conversation. Our public hearing is next Wednesday. And then we have the Board of Ed and the CIP presentations. And then after that, we have several different departments and or outside agencies scheduled amongst all those agendas through April second that I have put out there. So are we inviting everybody, somebodies? Is there anybody specifically anybody wants to talk to?
Um, I guess my first question is, how are we going to do the public hearing? Good to see you, Jay.
So there may be some guidance from Governor and Executive Order seven B that I can get you some more information once I'm back in the office tomorrow. They are waiving a number of things that pertain to public meetings. For example, we're able to do video conferencing for meetings now. That's not something that is typically encouraged under the law, but they recognize that we're in new territory. I can forward that. Thing to keep in mind that I need some legal guidance on. And and Amy has an opinion on this, but I I want to get Josh.
I'm sorry, can I interrupt for a second? Jason, I'm sorry. Hey, Jason?
Yep.
Karen, your, your phone is actually, if you could go on mute, you're getting noise off your, that's what's cutting us out.
I'm sorry.
It's, it happens. Okay, sorry, I couldn't hear you. Go ahead.
Okay. So the other thing that I need to get a legal opinion on is the, I think it was the governor's executive order seven C extended the budget approval process for municipalities that have budget deadlines on or before May fifteenth. The bad news is we have budget deadlines before and after May fifteenth. So it's unclear whether or not it's the first date or the last date that applies to us. Amy and I have spoken and she has an opinion that and she can speak for herself too. Her, her thought was that because our drop dead date was after that date, that the extent doesn't apply. But nonetheless, I'm going to get Josh to opine to make sure that we understand what our new timeframe is. Effectively, the governor has waived that part of the charter.
Okay. All right. So now back to what Amy asked in, that would be, I think a lot of us either watch the budget budget presentations to the Board of Selectmen either online or we were at the meetings. So are there any individuals that are looking to look at, make sure we have certain people on this call so we can ask questions? Usually I know it's the bigger ones, like obviously we would want Kathy from the Board of Ed, because I'm sure we'll have questions, because we don't even have their itemized yet. Um, typically the fire and the police, we usually have some questions and Tom, you do. So we're definitely going to have to have the police there, Amy. That's going to be one. Anything from anybody else?
I guess at this time I'm good. As we get into it, we may have some questions and I guess we could just forward them and have them respond to us or call us, I guess. I don't know how to say it, but.
Yeah. So Aim, I think maybe one of the things is why don't we look, say the order of what we have going on?
Okay. So our meeting on the twenty fifth, we have the public hearing and then we have a budget workshop after that. And that's the Board of Ed and capital improvements.
Yep. So and Kathy will be there. She's Board of Ed and capital improvement. So we're covered there.
I'll be there and thank you for putting them both on the same night. Much appreciated.
That's why we did it. Not realizing you would not have to come out at all because it was going to be videoed, but.
But still, it's nice to not have to be midstream for the night waiting for my turn on, so thank you.
So the next one is next Thursday, the twenty sixth. And that one has the town clerk, the registrars, assessor, town planner. assessor, town planner, their various committees, historical, ag, and conservation commissions, selectmen, activities and fees, legal, ethics, charter revision, treasurer, board of finance, insurance and pension, and contingency.
Well, pretty much if you're there, Amy, and Jason, if you're there, I think that really kind of covers that night. Does everybody agree with that?
I'll agree with that, yes.
Okay.
And then on the 31st, which is the following Tuesday, we have building department, police, emergency management, communications, and police commission, Broadbrook Fire Department, and Warehouse Point Fire.
All right, what are we thinking about for that night? We know we need police. And it's open to anybody. I guess, Amy, we need to make sure that they know they're on the agenda, and we welcome them to be there even if we haven't asked them. Do you know what I mean?
Yep. I can send the whole list of the agendas out to the department heads.
Okay. All right. Other than on that night, do we want to specify anybody other than police, or?
No, I think I'm good for now. Like I said, I'll look it over, maybe at the next meeting we may, but for now, I think I'm good.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, sounds good. What's next?
The next one is April 2nd, which is a Thursday, and that one was supposed to be at Park Hill. But that one would be the tax collector, the cemetery association, the veterans commission, Broadbrook Library, Warehouse Point Library, Parks and Rec, Senior Center, Social Services, elderly commission, public works, sanitation, town properties, roads, IT, building commission, debt, revenues, and, and overall budget discussion.
I can tell you that budgets managed by Len and Joe, they certainly can do video conferencing, because I practiced this with them. So if you have questions about their budgets, I'm sure that they would be amenable to joining. I can't remember what else Amy said, but there's a bunch in there.
Yeah.
Melissa's group is all in there.
Melissa can do it, too.
Yeah, I guess the Melissa and Joe and Lenny, we probably should, because there's so many under that. What are you all thinking?
I'll agree.
I agree with that.
Now, the libraries.
I hear you, Mr. Sauerhoffer.
I disagree.
So the libraries are also that night. Now, we have funded them at their request currently.
Oh.
I don't know that, I mean, it's total overall, $30,000, Jason? The increase?
Between the two of them, it's $48,000. It's more.
What are you thinking, guys?
I think we can do without them. I mean, if we have a question, we can call them, but if they're funded at their request at the current time, I think we're good.
I guess for now, Amy, but I would still invite them because, just in case.
They already asked what their date was, at least the Warehouse Point one did.
All right.
So then our last meeting is April 8th, which I think is a Wednesday, and it's a discussion and finalize 2021 budget for the May 12, 20 budget referendum, and then discuss and finalize the budget mailer.
All right. Cool. Any, any other questions, guys? Anything anybody can think of before we adjourn?
I, and maybe it's in there, maybe I just missed it. I do not have a copy of the Board of Ed budget unless it's not been forwarded to us.
I have not received it yet.
Okay.
No, I think Kathy said on her presentation that they didn't have that quite yet. Kathy, you still there?
I am still here. We do have it. I just didn't bring it to this tonight because I figured we were gonna be concentrating on the more high level and not the nitty-gritty line by line, but we will get it to you in the next day or so.
Okay. Just so I can look it over ahead of your meeting, that's all.
I think, yeah, I think right now Chris is balancing between home laptop, home desktop, and office lap desktop, and I just, I don't want to commit her to tomorrow morning because I don't know where the file may be.
No, as long as I have time to look it over before our meeting, that's all I, you know, as long as I get it soon, that's all.
Yeah, it'll, it'll get out this week.
Okay.
All right. With that, Kathy, are you gonna drop them off at Town Hall so that we can call Amy if we need a hard copy?
Well, I was gonna have her mail the, the document to all of you, if that works, or...
Well, what I can do is if she emails it to me, I could make copies and have it be available, like, in your box, so if you get to the door, you call us, you call the finance office, somebody will get it to you.
I'll find the electronic one. I don't mind, because I'm watching you up here, and I'm looking at my computer screen and the other one, so I got both.
Well, I don't, so I want mine.
Yeah, I'd like that as an option as well, please.
Who is that?
Barbara.
Okay. Right now. That was Tom Tallamini.
Yeah, right now we have the schools all closed and no cleaning crews coming in, so we're hesitant to go in there in any way, shape, or form, so.
I'm okay making copies for people.
Thank you, Amy, appreciated.
It's all the same taxpayer dollars.
Yes, it is.
All right, so any other questions?
Yeah, this is Tom L. Did we ever resolve the public hearing part of the March 25th meeting? I know we had talked about the need to have one, but there's been some chatter on Facebook over the past couple of days, people that felt they wanted to be able to participate, so I don't know what the resolution is for that.
Go ahead, Jason.
So, three things on that. First of all, as I said, I'm trying to figure out what impact the Governor's executive order has on the need to do those. Secondly, these meetings that we're having right now, the login information is included on the meeting agenda. Anybody can log into them. It's, it's an open service that's available. And thirdly, and I mentioned this to Geraldine earlier this afternoon, I would suggest you guys accept written testimony up until your April 8th date for consideration. That's a practice that's done in the legislature, but it also is a way that you could still try and engage the public in whatever means happens to be available. But the notion of potentially getting everybody sitting at a table in a room full of people is not going to happen this year.
And I will adjust all the agendas, so, so like you'll see the one I sent out yesterday for the amended agenda for tonight, I replaced where the town meeting was being held with how to call into it. And as those are set up, I will adjust all the agendas, refile amended agendas with the board, with the town clerk, and get them out to the board members.
I think also...
On the website.
I think also Joe has his hand up.
No, sorry, just playing around.
So that's actually interesting, that, that means that the host can mute everybody and then wait for, if somebody wants to speak, for them to raise their hands. This is a neat toy.
I think you're the only one that saw my hand up.
Yeah.
No, I saw it, too. And this is, yeah, so this is like WebEx, and it's imperative, if we're gonna have a, a public meeting, everybody's gotta be muted until we, you know, you know, we'll make a list, just like we do, but it's all virtual. Otherwise, you know, the noise and the distractions will, it'll just be ridiculous. We won't be able to get anything done.
Right.
So we'll have to explain to everybody at the beginning of the meeting, you know, how it works and everything, you know? Not everybody has to do this kind of stuff, and so otherwise, you know, it's just too much.
So, so, did I catch that right? So the host of the meeting has the ability to mute everybody and, and unmute individuals one at a time?
Yeah, I can. So I'm the host of this, I can, apparently I can mute and unmute everybody, and I also think I can turn people's cameras on and off. I'm gonna try.
No way.
Yeah, I'm gonna try that right now.
You better not.
Well, who wants to be my guinea pig?
Me. Pick me. Okay. I'm, I'm gonna get to Joe now.
Did it work?
No.
I can't see Joe.
Yeah, it asked me the question on the screen. I have to answer yes or no.
Ah.
So there you go.
So can you shut somebody off who's actually on?
Let me try that. Barbara?
Yeah, go ahead.
Did she go away?
Not yet. She's there.
Hey, it just said, "Host has stopped my video."
Okay. Now I'm going to say, I'm gonna mute Amy. Amy, are you there?
Wow, that's amazing. Amy muted is amazing.
So, you know, I think one of the takeaways with this...
Jay, I, I can't start my camera, you have to unlock it.
Oh.
Amy, Amy won't be able to talk until you unmute her.
Oh, right. Okay, so...
All the power to the selectmen.
Amy, Amy.
Hey, Charlie's here. I just wanna, I wanna thank you guys for conducting your meeting like this tonight, and for letting us kind of kick the tires to make sure that this is a workable solution. I, I have some concerns that this might not be a workable solution for long, because the more business that shifts to virtual meetings, the more stress that's going to put on this service, so this is a plan for now, we'll see what happens, but I think this worked pretty well.
No, it was really good, Jason. Thank you for setting it up, but you are right about the stress that it'll be put on it, because we have go-to meeting at work, and it was so overloaded the other day that we could only do the phone-in.
The upside is, we, most of the, the need for this will be off-peak hours, so...
That's just what I was gonna say. We're at nighttime, not during the day, so we might be halfway okay.
Yeah.
Unless we have a giant town meeting, we'll, I think we'll be good.
Did you guys officially adjourn yet?
No, and I don't think Amy is unmuted, Jason, because unless she muted herself...
I chose not to unmute myself.
I'm just gonna say, you guys are still recording this, I think, if, if this thing is telling me the truth up here, so I don't know if you want to adjourn and then discuss legit after?
Nope, that's okay. I think we're okay.
Okay.
And actually, I think we're done for the most part, are we not? Does anybody have anything?
I'm good.
All right, sounds good. So who would like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll move adjourn.
And is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Barbara. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thanks, guys, for everything.
All right.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.